You Jeff and then Rockport AV.
Deborah, you can go anytime.
You're in gallery view Doug.
All right. Let's call, uh, call to order the, uh, meeting of, uh, the Rockport Select Board for Tuesday, May 26th. It's 5:30 PM and we are doing this remotely. Uh, due to the pandemic and, um, as noted on the agenda, if anybody has questions, um, they can submit them to the town manager at, um, at Phil's, um, email address, as you can see at the top of the screen. The first item on the, we have a forum. Um, I don't think we have Mark, um, here. But we still have a forum. Um, the first item on the agenda is the town manager's report.
Thanks. Um, I don't have a lot to add other than what is in my written report and I'll scroll down to that so that we have it on the screen. Um, so as you know, members of our police and fire department have been going through with a basic EMT course, um, for the last several months, uh, and they were to take the final written test last week. And then they have a hands-on final on June 6th. It has certainly been difficult for them to try to undertake hands-on training. So, uh, we'll see how that works, but I certainly appreciate all of their efforts. In getting through this, uh, once they pass the written and the hands-on tests, then they have to, um, sit for their national certification. So a lot more information as that comes along.
Right.
Our summer intern from the Margaret Chase Smith Policy Center started today. Her name and she'll, you'll meet her at the next meeting. Um, her name is Olivia LaRoche and she lives in Searsmont. She currently is attending Wellesley College in Massachusetts. And she's majoring in international relations, international relations and political science. So I think she's going to be a great addition to the town office staff.
Would you just remind me what your casts will be?
There are several Doug. We've got, I've got a list of 12 projects that we've submitted as part of the internship application back in whenever it was that I submitted it. Um, but they range from small things like, doing some research on codes and ordinances to see where we stand and if everything's up to date or not, which I know that some things aren't. To helping with the, uh, parking study group. To, um, helping me with the comprehensive wage survey and the job description updates. Digitizing old personnel files is probably one of the more boring topics that she'll be attacking. Mapping the Seaview Cemetery. So we have an up-to-date map. Helping us update the town's website as well as the Opera House page that will go underneath the town's, uh, website. Those are the ones off the top of my head and there's again, there's, there's six or seven more and we're going to expand that list. Now that I know who it is, because when we put the application in at first, it's a, it's a blind application, if you will. So we submit a list of projects that we try to find that are wide-ranging. So that we can find an intern that would, um, meet, meet some of the needs that we have. And then once we have the intern in place, then my general goal is that I work with that intern to determine of those projects, what are most interesting to her. Obviously there are some that I want to get done. And then I've got a list of other projects that are also available to be worked on. So she can look through those as well and find some that might be of interest to her as well.
Okay, that's good. Thanks.
Um, pleased to say that the brown-tailed moth treatments have been accomplished. So, uh, Treeworks from Rockport trimmed the tree, trimmed the nests out of the trees at Marge Jones Recreational Fields and Walker Park. In addition, they injected the trees at Walker Park with the incest, insecticide that will kill any remaining caterpillars. Treeworks did their work at Walker Park at no cost to the town. So I want to give them kudos for that. Um, originally they wanted to do a demo for the public when it came to showing their piece of equipment and what they're able to do, which is a unique piece of equipment that can, um, get into places that a normal bucket truck can't get. Uh, and reach top of trees that bucket trucks can't get to. In addition, the trees at Marge Jones Fields have been injected with the incest, insecticide by the school employee. And because we had some insecticide remaining, I also authorized injections at the Seaview Cemetery. As you probably recall, there are a large number of oak trees there and they were severely infested last year. Um, so we didn't do any trimming there, but we certainly did get the, um, injections in. And I, as of last Wednesday or Thursday, Thursday, they had done something like 500 injections at the Seaview Cemetery alone. Keeping in mind that that's not 500 trees, but each tree has to have a certain number of injections based on its diameter. So hopefully that, those efforts will help control that population. And again, keeping in mind that obviously private property, we can't touch any trees on private property. So there'll be caterpillars and moths that will be migrating from, uh, some of the private property that's abiding those parcels onto the towns. So that's where the, uh, the injections come into play. Hopefully when they do move from other trees onto the trees that are on the town, probably they've been treated, then they'll, uh, ingest the insecticide and kill, kill them off hopefully. As you know, um, Andre had a facelift, as to use one of your terms, I think, that we talked about. His, um, the repair that was done a couple, three years ago, failed and the, um, individual that repaired him was completely embarrassed and came back and it's been repaired again. Um, it is a tricky, after speaking with him, it's very tricky for that, uh, bonding agent to stay, to, to have a good, strong bond. It has to have a certain temperatures and humidity and, and the like. So, um, we'll, we'll continue to monitor that. Um, the town office did reopen on May 18th. Uh, any, any customers that have been coming in have been, have been excellent in abiding by wearing face masks, masks or putting them on, um, as well as practicing social distancing. It's been going very smooth. We haven't seen a, a huge number or increase in the amount of transactions. Uh, slight uptick. Um, but that's, I think, as people get more used to it and realize that it's, it is a safe place that they can come in and we're taking all the precautions, I think that will probably increase. And I just wanted to throw some facts out there about the type of work that I have to do about, around this pandemic. And so I just took a snapshot over the last two weeks when I wrote this report. Uh, and, and reviewed the number of hours that I spend thinking on some, some issues doing, to do with the pandemic. And I was kind of surprised. Now, obviously, fell into this, this, um, but at this point, that two-week snapshot, I put in 39 hours uh, in some fashion on the pandemic work, whether that's researching, uh, issues through or getting guidance from the CDC, uh, the governor's office, the ECD office, um, training board and committee members, planning, um, budget cuts or town meeting, uh, revised schedules. You name it. Um, but basically that amounted to 39 hours over a two-week period of time. And I think it, I know significantly more than that in previous weeks. So I wanted to throw that out there just so that you get an idea of what, of what kind of work that goes into this. It's kind of surprising when you actually look at the number of hours. So I, with that, if there are any questions, I certainly will answer those.
Bill, you had mentioned that there's maybe some reimbursement, at some point in time for costs incurred by the town due to the pandemic. Is, is that sort of thing also reimbursable? The, the town?
That's, that's one of the reasons that I'm tracking it in hopes that it will be reimbursed. It's, at this point, it's an unknown whether that time will be reimbursed or not. We're still waiting for guidance on that. However, there's, um, most, most all of the, all of the expenses that we've incurred to date will be reimbursed. Through FEMA and MEMA. So, um, we, Megan is working on that with, uh, with Jason as EMA Director. So I track my time in hopes that it will be reimbursed or even partially reimbursed. Cause anything we can get would certainly be beneficial. Anything else? Any other questions?
Sorry, I was on, I was on mute. So, um, I was going to say that, um, I know that there was some hope that we would, you know, make some, make some headway on some issues behind the scenes, uh, during this period of time. Um, but it's really not so much been that way because instead the staff and in particular Bill has just had additional work as a result of this.
Yeah, and I, I agree with that. I, originally when we were closing to the public and, um, working remotely, I thought geez, a great time for us to catch up on some projects. And there were some things that did get, um, caught up at the town office. Some filing and things like that. I know that, uh, the assessor has, has caught up on a lot of different things, which is good. But surprisingly, the rest of us, it just hasn't worked out that way because we've been responding to the pandemic stuff. So it hasn't, we, I, I certainly have not caught up. I've gone further behind, I think. Which is a little disappointing, but.
Yeah.
It is what it is. We have to deal with it and we're, we're dealing with it as we, as it comes along. So.
Anything else on Bill's report?
Mark just joined us.
Yes, he did a few minutes ago. I, he didn't have the call-in, so I sent it to him. Where you couldn't even find it, you know. Um, like all of us, I had that problem last week, uh, or last month. Um, okay. Then next, uh, we'll be moving on to amendments to the agenda. But before we do that, Bill, do you have any, um, comments from the public that you've received? Or items not on the agenda?
Looking, I could make a suggestion possibly for Deborah and perhaps Mark. I found that if I go to my Outlook account on my computer to get ready to sign in, in the upper right-hand corner, there is a little box. And if I click on that, it tells me that, uh, the meeting is about to start in 10 minutes and it gives me the link and everything. So I don't have to be searching through all of my emails.
Yeah, that's good. I did that today, actually. So. So Bill, do you have, you're on mute, I think. Do you have any, have you received any comments from the public?
I haven't received anything through live stream and I don't have any emails, uh, recently. I did send out, uh, forwarded a bunch of emails previously today to the select board, uh, on comments, the CIF proposal.
Yeah. Yeah. But, okay. So this is the time for public comment for, I'm not on the agenda and appears we don't. So the next item is amendments to the agenda. Does anyone have any suggested amendments which would include taking anything off the consent agenda?
I just had a few comments to make on the May 11th meeting.
Okay. So then we should take the minutes off of the, of the consent agenda. And that leaves us with the consent agenda of just the, um, the resignation. Bill, as a matter of procedure, we don't have to have a motion to approve an amended agenda, do we? Bill?
Yeah, no, you don't, um, for taking something off the consent agenda, you really don't need a motion there. That's simply just taking it off. So.
I think we did that last time, but I didn't think we needed it. Yeah. Okay. So, uh, if that's the only change to the agenda, then we are on the consent agenda, which is the committee resignation of Rock, Rock, of Lori Smith from Rockport Parks and Beautification Committee.
I move the board approve the consent calendar, uh, as modified, uh, to the resignation of Lori Smith from Rockport Parks and Beautification Committee.
Second.
Is that Jeff the seconded?
Yep.
Um, all right. Uh, Jeff?
Hi.
Mark?
Yes.
Denise?
Yes.
Doug?
Yeah.
And I vote yes. All right. So the next item is the, uh, non-consent agenda item being the meeting minutes of May 11th, 2020. Doug, do you want to start with your comments?
Just very quickly on page six of nine. Be, uh, discuss and refer the solar land use regulations to ordinance. In the second paragraph there, um, it says, "Board member Cole stated that he has no idea of the various issues." That shouldn't be, he had in the past tense. Uh, just because once I became aware of the issues, I did study up on it a bit. So that's a small change. Two paragraphs further down, I'm wanting to clarify again, it says, "Board member Cole stated that in reviewing Joe Stenowsky's letter, there are four questions, and that should say there are four questions he would like asked of the select board." And I think that's sort of an important change because, the next several lines, uh, there are various answers. And I think those answers reflect the feelings of the select board, if I'm not mistaken. Makes sense?
Yep. Was that it?
That's it.
Any other comments?
I have some other revisions to the, um, agenda, I mean, to the minutes, page three of nine. Under B, where it refers to Vice Chair Munger, member Cole moved. I don't know which it was, but it was only one of us. Under the minutes of March 23, 2020 workshop.
Yeah, we'll look it up and get it corrected.
Okay. And then under minutes, under C, minutes of April 22, 2020, select board meeting. It's not Scribner's air, it's Scrivener's air. So it's S.C.R.I.V.E.N.E.R. On four of nine, in the fourth paragraph down that begins town manager post, I stated that someone watching live stream wants to know when the minutes for April 22 will be available. I think all that person wanted to know is how to get a copy of them as we were talking about them. So I, I don't think that's, quite how that, what that was about. Remember it was, because they were just trying to figure out, we were trying to figure out if we could show the minutes up on the live stream and decided we couldn't. And then we found out that you could just get them off the town website if that person wanted to look at them. But it was really just about looking at them, when they would be available.
Do you have another one Denise?
I do. On page, um, six of nine, the second, uh, paragraph, Vice Chair Munger stated, and I, I just sort of edited that to, I think, at least reflect what I meant if it didn't come across that way. So I would like it to say Vice, Vice Chair Munger stated that, um, this is a creative, it, that, oh dear. This is a creative, positive idea and a good counterbalance to the many cancellations of summer events. She thanked the proponents for their thoughtful work and approach in bringing something fun to the community. And I, Bill, I can get you the language.
Yes, please.
Okay.
Anybody else?
That's it.
All right. No comments? And can we have a motion?
I move we approve the minutes of May 11th, 2020, as amended.
Second. Second.
Okay. I think Jeff seconded it first.
Mark, Mark gave it.
Oh, Mark, Mark, Mark seconded it. Um, okay. Um, Jeff?
Hi.
Mark?
Yes.
Denise?
Yes.
Yes.
And I vote yes. Okay. All right. Uh, the, uh, moving into action items, the first action item on the agenda is to act on the use of the RES site by Camden Air National Film Festival CIF. If you want to update us on what's going on since our last meeting when we first, uh, proposed this for consideration.
Yeah, I just think, think I turn it over to, uh, to Ben and Emily so that they can, um, present what they have in the packet. They certainly, I think, have answered quite a few of the potential concerns that were addressed by the select board at your last meeting, uh, when discussing this. So I'll just turn it over to them.
Thanks, Bill. And hello, everybody. Uh, again, um, I, I, I think you all, uh, hopefully you had a chance to, um, read through the proposal. Uh, like, like Bill said, we, we did try to address as, as much of the, the questions that you, uh, that were brought up in the last select board meeting two weeks ago. Uh, we're moving pretty fast on this, as, as fast as we possibly can. Um, and so, uh, the good news is, is that there is a lot of, there's quite a, a national consortium out there right now, organizations like ours that are quickly transitioning to drive-ins, um, whether they're repurposing different spaces or using existing drive-ins. So the idea around social distancing, around how to do this safely is, is something that we're, um, we have a lot of, uh, a lot of support around and people that we can discuss this with. Um, since the last meeting, I think the, the big thing is, is that we have had a onsite visit with, uh, police, fire and, uh, Scott Pickford, code enforcer. We have two different kind of, uh, building, uh, kind of, uh, proposals in the, in the, in the, uh, kind of, sorry, the proposal we sent to you. I think we're leaning a bit more towards the, um, uh, the, the kind of telephone pole, uh, approach that is listed in, I think it's probably scenario, uh, or sketch B. Still, still though, working on that final, uh, final, uh, plans for the structure. Uh, we have had a lot of communication with Scott about this and, um, uh, we'll, 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 we'll be sharing everything that we do with him through our multi-permit, purpose, uh, the application we have in the process with him. One of the things we talked about with the, the police and fire was that the, the site does need some cleaning. We walked through the space and, and, and really reviewed how we can mark and clean the lot. And how we might restructure our plan for layout to ensure safety for all the attendees. Right now, um, clearly the, the, the structure is really built around cars. Social distance plans are really strong in the proposal. As I mentioned, we're working with a nationwide, national-wide consortium to address best practices. Much of our proposal outlining, uh, what we plan to do, uh, at the bare minimum. One of the big things is we are going to be bringing out, bringing in, uh, new staff members for this. We're going to need a tech manager. We're going to need a, 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 our own producer that is really overseeing this project for us. In addition to the 68 volunteers, we believe we, we will need for each event. And our staff, which is five full-time staff members for PNI. Talking about having police detail for at least the, the first few. And part of that is just to really get the best sense of how traffic flow is working, ins and outs. Um, there was a lot of enthusiasm from both police and fire, but again, we want to make sure that we're doing this, setting up the best protocol possible, uh, to make sure that it's safe, it's exciting, and there's a really nice and easy flow. So that, that communication is open. It's happening. It will continue to happen. We have got a lot of goodwill from the town. We've been sending some of the stuff we've been getting from Bill. Clearly, one of the things we didn't realize is when you're on a, a select board meeting, sometimes things get out in the press. Uh, and that did happen with Penn Bay Pilot. That spurred another, uh, release from Bangor Daily News and main public. So this, this is, um, definitely something that's capturing the interest of a lot of people, which is exciting to see. We, we hand mailed letters to all of the immediate neighbors, uh, next to the site. And I'm happy to say that was done last week. I'm happy to say that we did hear, uh, so far, one positive response from John Randolph. We did say I could use his name. So he was very excited about, um, the space being utilized in such a capacity. So that communication is happening as well. Again, in the proposal, what we're talking about is, uh, constructing a, a structure that allow us to project onto a, a wall in the, 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 um, that kind of tarred concrete section of that space. Two to three events per month, July through September, using it as a venue for the CIF weekend, October 1 through 4. And as we figure out what our, what our festival footprint is potentially a little bit more, but really we're looking at trying to get this thing off the ground for, for, you know, kind of bi-weekly events starting in the summer. The second week of July is our hope, if we can get this thing approved and, and really start figuring out, uh, you know, the, the, the building implications. One of the things I, I also want to talk about, and this may not be the time, but, um, should this, should this go well and, and the town is, is excited about it? We would like to talk about the potential of, 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 of what a renewal might look like for the 2021 season, given we don't know what venues are going to look like then. We're not asking to, to talk about that today, but we did want to say that this is something that should we be able to continue to do it next spring, um, if the site is, is, um, you know, not leased or sold, we would be excited about that. The, the dates for July on, if this does get built, um, we have a, 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 a sense of when we want those dates to be. We don't have the exact date marked in and that is because it all kind of depends on when the building gets completed. Um, and so that's what we're, what we're, we're kind of trying to figure out right now. Let's see what else. Uh, we've had some communication with, with several food trucks and we know with Scott what the, what the legalities in, in terms of permitting around that are going to be. And on our end, we have listed both the RES site and the town of Rockport has additionally insured on our general liability insurance. That is done. We'll be sharing that with the town, um, if it's not in the proposal. Um, and, and the other thing I think that's mentioned in the, in the beginning of the proposal is that we are looking, um, to see if the town would let us use this space for this season, um, uh, free of charge. To help us, um, uh, you know, source the, 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 uh, the, the financial contributions we'll need to build out this space and to manage it appropriately. Emily or Jeff, anything else to add to that before we open up to any questions?
I'm sorry, I was muted. I'll point out two things. One, that the board certainly is aware of the fact that, when the town leads, uh, by example and says this is a worthwhile endeavor, that that helps the, uh, the donators, the donors that Ben will be going after, uh, just sets the right tone. So I would urge the town to consider that. Secondly, the drawing that's up on the page right now is, uh, has been modified a little bit since it was drawn, which is to say that the three cars that are in the, directly in front of the screen, uh, won't be there. We talked a lot about safety concerns with Randy and we, um, uh, we decided that some Jersey barriers, uh, along that drop-off would be the safest and best approach to, uh, the distribution of cars. So we strike those three cars there and have Jersey barriers that, uh, provide, uh, for safety for drivers and pedestrians.
I think this looks very good and well thought out and a lot of the details and questions that came up last time and it seems like everyone has been addressed. I'm very supportive.
Yeah, there was a lot of work put into the, uh, and presented here. I know we've jumped back and forth through sections, but, uh, we just want to make sure that that plan would be available through our notes to anyone who would be wanting to review them in detail.
In view of all the positive feedback that we got back from the public over the course of last week or so, uh, I would move that the board approve the use of the RES site by Point North Institute for a temporary drive-in theater with full details to be approved by the appropriate town staff, including the code enforcement officer and the town manager.
Do we need to say at no cost? Just?
Yeah.
At no cost.
Second.
I, I do have a question if I could.
Okay.
I, and I've thumbed through this proposal a couple of times, but, uh, is there any anticipated need of restroom facilities? I don't know the volume of people, but we supply only one for the field side. So I don't really want anybody going peeing in the bushes.
Yeah. Um, and, and certainly one of the things we were talked about is Yeah, and, and certainly, one of the things we talked about is, depending on the, the, the usage, we, we, we work with Clean Woods and a number of different businesses for, for, for that. We would, we would work with them on, on bringing an additional one or, or two out for, for the event, and whether or not they, they stay there. You know, I guess it would be a question of if you guys would be comfortable with that, or they, they, they get dropped off and picked up after each, each event. It's something we, we will be working with them, but we have even gotten down to the point of understanding how people would, said people would be able to utilize those restrooms in terms of our staffing and text messaging, how they're doing at other drive-ins. So, it is something we're definitely aware of, needing more of. That what we've, what we've, the numbers that we've been hearing from most people is it's basically about one in every 10 cars during a movie need to use the restroom on average. So, clearly, we, we think we would probably be okay with one, but we most likely will be, A, servicing that one for the events, and B, most likely bringing in at least an additional outside porta potty for, for our screenings.
Thank, thank you, Ben, I, this is a great idea, and I'm looking forward to it, so thank you.
Yeah, thank you.
Yeah, I think it's a great idea, and we have gotten, as, as Bill alluded to earlier, we have gotten a number of, of emails from the public supporting, supporting the idea. All right, so we have a first and a second, wait a minute, Jeff has a comment.
Yeah, the statement that there would be two to three per month, I just wonder if we should make that a formal part of the motion.
I wouldn't want to lock us in on my side, I mean, not that we're gonna have it every night, but...
Yeah, I, I will say this, I agree, because, you know, we're, we're a pretty small staff, so, you know, it's not something where, and I've got a three-year-old, so my, my, my nights, most of my nights are taken. But I will say, we have gotten, which I think is a really interesting and exciting point, a number of organizations, both in Rockport and Rockland, have reached out with excitement themselves, knowing that they aren't able to, to bring their, their audiences together. So, there might, you know, we, we don't know what our capacity will be, but it would be great if we weren't limited to a strict number. What we can say is we are very comfortable being extremely transparent with whoever it may be to make those final decisions, and we are gonna want to have, if this is going forward, a, a very mapped-out summer. So, in the next, I would say, two weeks, we could, we could theoretically have those, those dates locked in, and if there is one month where there is one additional event, we could have that outlined well in advance.
As mentioned before, I think that it would be appropriate for us to state what our struggles are for limit on how many times per month.
All right, does anybody else have any comment on that point? Okay, there's a first and a second on the table. So, there's, let's see, Jeff? Vote.
Ready for vote?
Yep.
Aye.
Mark?
Yes.
Denise?
Yes.
Bug?
Yes.
And I vote yes. I think, Jeff, that the, you know, the message is clear that we don't want to see some, see them doubling the number here or something. So, you know, we'll have plenty of time, it sounds like, with, to, to review that schedule soon.
What, what is the lot capacity according to Scott for that usage, do we know?
Do you have that? Maybe I'm muted, I, the only thing I can say is that we have kind of listed for about 80 cars, and when we talked with Scott, that wasn't, didn't seem like it was anywhere near the ballpark capacity. I don't have that number personally off the top of my head.
That's cool, that's, that's all right, Ben, thank you.
Thanks, Ben, thanks for, you guys for bringing this forward, I think it's gonna be great to have the town in that area.
Well, good luck.
Yeah, thank you, and we appreciate the time.
Yeah, thank you.
Great. Okay, the next item is the Act on Planning Board bylaws, amended bylaws. We have a copy of the bylaws before us, they've been reviewed by the town's outside council, and they are consistent with some of the items that we require to be in the new bylaws, so.
It means the board approves the planning board bylaws as amended.
Second.
Okay, any discussion? All right, Jeff?
Aye.
Mark?
Yes.
Denise?
Yes.
Doug?
Yes.
And I vote yes. Okay, the next item on the agenda is the Memorial Park Plan. Doug, would you like to lead this?
Yes, I would, and I will try to save you one of my rambling presentations, so I've made some notes here. In your packet, what you'll find are several items. One is a conceptual sketch of the plan. The second is a planting plan for the buffer garden. And then finally, we have the draft minutes from the parks meeting of May 13th, May 20th, where this was discussed and recommended for a select board approval. I want to give a real thumbs up to Sue Cow, who is one of our members, who took these minutes, and I find that they're incredibly thorough, and it answers a lot of questions that the, the public had about the plan. I think you've had a chance to take a, to take a look at it. There's one area on page four that I think I'll reference, a request that the neighbors had, but we can get to that a little later in the presentation. So, let's start off with the conceptual plan, the first page. Let me tell you, first of all, the orientation on this could be a little bit confusing, because the bottom says Memorial Park, but that's just the title of the slide. So, on the far left of the diagram, where it says Four Sugar Maples, that will be Union Street, and where it says Memorial Park, that is Lime Rock Street. So, that will get everybody oriented. Couple of comments on this slide. At the top center portion, you'll see two trees that are called transplanted pin oaks. In the current plan, the committee has recommended against moving those pin oaks, which are over right now, next to Union Street, and either just eliminating them or moving their somewhere, moving them somewhere else. And the reason for that is that these do tend to attract brown-tailed moths, and they're fairly small trees, so we just think we'd be better off to not transplant them, so you can scratch that off of the list. Then I want to draw your attention to the central buffer garden. You have an enlargement of that on the next page, it shows various plantings. But, the purpose of this, the purpose of this garden has really been to shield Beth Owen Davis's property from headlights as people pull into the parking spaces there on Lime Rock Street. Jeff, if you can scroll back up again. I just want to point out that Beth Owen has been a very pleasant participant in this whole process, and she's expressed this concern very, very early on. And I think that the people who've been involved with this understood Beth's concerns and were trying to accommodate her, her on that. Like I said, she's been an active participant, and so that's why the buffer garden there. There, I also want to point out that this drawing is not the scale. Judy Flock brought to our attention that if you just look at this like this, it doesn't appear that there's much open space. But in reality, if this is all brought up to the full scale, there really is quite a bit of open grassy area for kids to run around, throw balls and stuff like that without running into a tree or running across the garden. So, up at the very top, it says the drawing is not the scale, and that's important to pay attention to that. The space under, kind of in front of the beech tree on the far right-hand side, is still attracting some attention. And the reason for that is that, if you will recall, the select board back in November, or whatever it was, we sort of left that area open in case we ever needed to expand the parking from seven to 14 spaces. You'll notice in the minutes that the neighbors wanted us to assure them that we would not be expanding the parking. On the other hand, I think most of us received multiple letters from various library patrons and committees expressing they would like to have that area reserved for parking in the future, if it became necessary. So, the bottom line is, I don't think tonight's meeting, we really need to address that parking issue, thank God. But that beech tree would be set back far enough so that in the future, if it became necessary, parking could be installed there, but that could be a whole other discussion. Down near the parking, just to the left of it, some citizens wondered about the bike rack that you see penciled in there. And originally, we thought that that could be a small garden, but when we began to look at the traffic pattern, we thought people might end up just sort of walking through that garden, and it seemed to make sense to put a bike rack there that could be used by people. There were some concerns from some of the citizens about headlight issues of cars driving up and down Lime Rock Street, shining headlights, and, you know, I sort of get that, but the fact is, it's, A, it's not a busy street. And if you look at other properties around town, like the Surivics, who are right at the end of Union Street there, or Bobby Brown's house up on the curve on Russell Avenue, you know, the fact of the matter is, is that, you know, headlights are gonna be shining in some people's houses. And again, we can try to mitigate some of this, but, you know, if we try to do that for everybody in town, it's pretty impractical. So, I guess what we will be asking for shortly is a motion to approve this plan without the transplanted pin oaks. And I think that is it. So, we can either have a motion and then discussion, or discussion, questions, or you folks would like to do it.
I move the board...
Go ahead, Mark, yes.
I move the board approve the Memorial Park landscaping plan as submitted.
As amended, because without the transplanted pin oaks.
With, with the pin oak amendment, yes.
Second. Okay, now, discussion?
Doug, was there any discussion around moving the bike rack over to where the, to the right of the parking?
Over to where? To where, Jeff?
Underneath the beech tree.
Yeah.
Oh, no, no, we didn't think too much about it. I mean, that, that's a pretty easy thing to do.
Well, my thought was that if you wanted the garden, or if you wanted an open space or a garden close to the union, that might be an option, that it's gonna be open anyway.
Okay, well, let me make a note of that, we meet one a week from Wednesday, so that's an easy enough choice to make.
It's not just a stand, an item that you can just move, when you put it there and you say, oh, it's too crowded and...
Well, we haven't gotten quite that far, Denise, and I think it can be anything you want it to be, you know, from a freestanding one to one that's set in concrete. You know, again, my inclination is to have more of a freestanding one, just to be flexible.
There was one on the side of the town office entrance in the Richardson Room, if, if that's what you're talking about, there used to be one there.
That's right.
What happened to it?
I, you know, if we can find it, we can put it up there, because I don't think it got much use at the town office.
The other thing is, in approving this, we are not approving the financing of it or anything, right, Doug?
Correct. Well, and I want to point out, too, that, first of all, we did start off with the $10,000 donation, and we have already perched, plucked a little bit more than that. So, we've already purchased the four sugar maples, the beech tree, and the balsam fir that you see there. Those were all purchased for, I believe the total was around $4,600, that came out of the generous $10,000 donation. So, those trees are currently being stored at Plants Unlimited, and we still have, whatever the balance is, $5,600 left to use for the buffer garden and things like that. I'll point out that the sidewalks and the pathway through the park are all part of the intersection plan being done under the separate contract I apply, so that path is already there.
So, my understanding is the intent of this motion is to approve the conceptual layout as presented.
Correct, so we can start to move forward.
But no approval of any funding for it.
Hmm?
But no approval of any funding, I mean, we're not, everybody was clarifying, this is...
So, we, we have pretty good funding for it, as I pointed out.
You're not asking us to approve...
No, 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 no money. Just that this is what, again, we sort of expect things to look like, and that we hope you people are happy with that, and if you are, we'll kind of keep moving in this direction. Now, it turns out from a timetable, I, I was originally hoping we'd get into the park kind of the mid-July, but it turns out, Charlie tells us that, more realistically, we probably can't have started on any of this until September 1st. Which is good news, bad news, but the, you know, the bad news is I would kind of want to get going on it. The good news is, is that time of year, a lot of the local nurseries, of course, will have excess inventory, and it may help us obtain a fair amount of the plantings at a, at a good cost. In the fall is not a bad time to plant the, uh, plant.
Yeah. Okay, so we have a motion and a second, are there any more discussion, any other discussion?
Just my final thought, if you haven't had a chance, I would recommend you look over Sue Cow's minutes, because it's a very thorough discussion of a lot of these points.
Okay, should we call the question? Mark, did you have a comment? No.
No, no, no.
You're voting, Jeff?
Aye.
Mark?
Yes.
Denise?
Yes.
Jeff?
Great pleasure, yeah.
I think this is a great job, you guys, and I vote yes.
Yeah, it's beautiful.
All right. The next item on the agenda is Act on Workers' Compensation Safety Incentive Program. Bill?
Yeah, so this is a pretty easy one for the board, I think. A few months ago, Maine Municipal Association developed a workers' compensation safety incentive program with the idea that it would help reduce incidents and impact to workplace injuries in municipalities. So, when this first came out, I immediately forwarded it on to Diane Hamilton, the safety coordinator, and Megan Brackett, finance director in the town, because with our shape compliance, our townwide shape compliance, we automatically qualify for the second tier of the program. There are three tiers, and putting us in the second tier gets us a 7.5% reduction in workers' compensation insurance premiums. So, all we have to do is have the board approve the resolve as submitted, and basically, just a very simple resolve. Once we establish a wellness plan, we then will advance to a tier three premium reduction, which is a 10% reduction in premiums.
I'll move the board approve the M.A. Workers' Compensation Safety Incentive Program resolved as submitted.
I can.
A question, Bill.
Yeah.
Will, will the 10% reduction in the premiums be seen in the upcoming budget year, or will that be for next year?
It'll be seven and a half percent because we're only in tier, tier two.
Well, optimistically, I'm looking for tier three, but.
Yeah, well, I think seven, the seven and a half percent will be for this next budget year. And then we adopt the wellness program during the next fiscal year, then it would go up to 10% for the following.
Perfect, thank you.
Any further discussion? Okay, call the question. Jeff? Jeff?
Hi.
Mark?
Yes.
Denise?
Yes.
Yes, and Bill, would you make it a point to thank Megan and Diane again for the work they're doing on this? This really is great stuff.
Of course.
It is. I agree. And I vote yes. Our next item is the vote to sign the Budget Validation Referendum, MSAD number 28, and five town CSD warrant and notice of election for Tuesday, July 14, 2020. Bill?
Yes, this is just a simple counter signing the school officials on the warrant so that the election can be held. You're not necessarily approving the school budget, you're just voting to sign the budget validation referendum and warrant for the notice of, and notice of election.
Move the board sign the Budget Validation Referendum for MSAD number 28 and five town CSD warrant and notice of election for Tuesday, July 14, 2020.
Second.
Second. Oh, Mark beat me again.
And Mark seconded. Any discussion? Okay, call the question. Jeff?
Yes.
Mark?
Yes.
Denise?
Yes.
Doug?
Yes.
And I vote yes. So Bill, you'll have these out in the, in the vestibule for us to sign?
You can neither go, we need to put them in the vestibule, or you can come into the town office since we're open, so.
Okay, yeah, we can do that now, right.
I'll have them at the counter.
Okay.
At the front counter, all the documents that will need to be signed.
Okay. All right. Next is Act on the Audit Bit Award. Bill?
Yes, so we did submit this out to bid. We did extend the deadline for another couple of weeks. Because of the pandemic issue, we ended up receiving two proposals. You'll see them in your packet. I included the one proposal from Smith and Associates. There, the current company is RHR Smith and Company. And their bid is a little bit lower than what Smith and Associates is providing. However, I'm recommending that the board award this to Smith and Associates. As you know, I've been frustrated with the current company, where we still do not have a final product back from them from our last fiscal year, which ended the last June. So we're in, we're in month 11. It was due back to us by the end of December last year. And so an interesting side point here is that we're currently paying them more than what their bid is for the next three years. So per year, we're paying them, off my head, it's like 15 or 16,000 dollars a year, and then their bid came in at 11.5. And the, the other proposal from Smith and Associates, they did, they did bid a one-year audit for 13,600. RHR Smith did not. And then the other option to bid was for a three-year contract, and the prices were for the three years, 37, 800 or 34, 500. However, I am recommending that the board awarded to Smith and Associates for the three-year contract. I've worked with both of these firms. They both know what they're doing. They are good firms. There's just been some hangups with the current company this year, causing the delays. So I think, I think every once in a while, it's always good for towns to change auditing companies anyway. Just because you have a new, fresh perspective when it comes, when the auditor just come in to review the financials.
A question, Bill, if I might.
Sure.
In scanning through this, is there verbiage in there that indicates that it has to be done by December 31st and back to us?
I believe there, I believe there is. I remember writing the RFP, Megan and I writing the RFP, and we had put in there that it had to be, the audit needed to be done by December 31st.
Okay, now, I just, like I said, scanning through it, and again, I didn't, it wasn't bedtime reading. And the other thing is, is there, you know, we didn't have perhaps enough teeth. Is there the need for a penalty phase should that not happen? A monetary penalty phase, just to make sure it does happen?
Yeah. I'm torn on that. And the reason for that is because there are things that do come up. You know, in, in audits, whether it's, you know, if somebody is out sick from the town staff that we can't get, you can't return the request for information around quickly, or, or their staffs come down with illness or whatever. So I'm, I'm reluctant to, to have a penalty there for that.
And that's, and that's fine. I, you know, I just, you know, and I understand all those reasons. I was just trying to cover that base so that we don't end up with a, you know, four or five months after the fact thing again, and be frustrated.
Well, and I will say that, you know, in awarding a three-year contract, we have a little bit of, we're tying, tying the town in. Obviously, I want to do that so that we have locked the pricing in. But at the same time, I'll write the contract in such a manner that we do have an out clause after year one. So that if we're not satisfied, then we do have an out clause. But again, I've worked with, I've worked with Smith and Associates for the past, well, probably seven out of the last eight years. And they do a fine job.
Yeah, no, I'm, I'm ready to vote, Deborah, sorry.
Yeah, and I just think, you know, in light of the performance issues we've had with RHR, Smith and Company, just because their bid is slightly less than Smith and Associates. You know, when it comes to performance, usually if you're, all else being equal, you might be tempted to take the lower bid. But here, all else is not equal. We really, I think we know we're not going to, are not getting good performance. So I think that just argues in support of what you're recommending, Bill.
And it's not a significant amount of money more either. You know, it'd be one thing if it was four or $5,000 difference. Then I'd have a hard time recommending going against the low bid.
It, it's not a significant amount. I was just going to say, and it's not just limited to them being late and blocked. It's the same situation with Midco Solid Waste. They're the auditor for that. And so, you know, it's just, it's been talking about across the board with our current auditor. Doug, you had a comment?
Yeah, just to show that I did my due diligence, I called my personal accountant down in Portland, who is a senior partner at a large firm down there, at personal cost to myself, knowing him. And asked him if he was familiar with Smith and Associates. And he said that he wasn't. He said that means they're probably a pretty small firm, and, which is okay. But he said sometimes for municipal operations, a small firm might not be the best choice. But again, he's not familiar with these folks. And, you know, I'll balance that against what Bill Post has to say he's worked with them. But I guess they are fairly small to be doing large audits.
Okay, any further comments? Okay, call the question. Jeff?
Yes.
Mark?
Yes.
Denise?
Yes.
Doug?
Yes.
Deborah? Yes. Okay, next item is Act on Budget Adjustments for the FYE 2021 budgets.
Yeah, so this is always something that I enjoy talking about, reducing the budget, because we have reduced revenues coming in. So let me pull up my, I think what I'm going to do is go directly to the summary. I assume most of you have looked at these line items anyway. So I'm going to go to the summary on the last page and pull that up. So and again, I've been, I've been working on these with Megan for the last, and, and department heads for the past three or four weeks. And this is what we've determined, that our total, a total current revenues that we're projecting, and keep in mind, this is for the next fiscal year, beginning in July 1st. We're, we're anticipating $159,000 less in revenue. And that doesn't include revenue sharing. As I said before, we estimated revenue sharing extremely low when we first started the budget process, and we did not adjust that up, which is to our benefit at this point. We've got a number of $216,000 budgeted. And the projection that was provided beginning of March was about $132,000 more than that from the State Treasurer's Office. I was expecting another number to come out from them last week, but I was mistaken that it, they're not going to have that number until July. So we really have to make these decisions before that. But if we stay with the $216,000 for revenue sharing, that's, that's 38% reduction from what the projection was back in March. So I think we're pretty safe with that. The other area that I really wanted to talk about was the excise tax, of course. And when I first wrote this, I looked at my colleagues across the state to see what they were looking at. And the general rule in Maine, or the, or the, when it comes to purchasing new vehicles, is it's about 15 to 17% per year are new vehicles being registered. Now, that's a statewide average. So when I was looking at our excise tax, I essentially used roughly a 10% reduction number versus a, a 15 or 17%. Just as an anecdote to this, and you probably see this as much as I do, driving around, there are a huge number of temporary plates on cars that I've noticed.
Like February.
Yeah. And so, and we've talked about this before, is that there's been a, obviously with the deals that the companies are providing with 0% financing for six, seven-year terms, deferred payments and the like. I'm not sure if we even need to have as high of a, a number of $85,000 as a reduction. And I'm, you know, I'm willing to, to listen to others when it comes to that. But we can have that conversation. If you follow down through, so I have with the $85,000 reduction in excise tax in there, the total revenue adjustments we're looking at is 159,000. So then staff, myself, Megan Brackett, and department heads went through the budgets for next year and looked at all the different expense accounts. And we think that we're able to reduce the expenses by almost $235,000, which obviously is a higher number than what we are anticipating for lower revenues. So that's not a, obviously not a bad thing. I will say that most of these cuts are in capital items, or for instance, the public works, you know, it's a $100,000 cut out of road paving and construction in the operating budget or in the capital side of the budget. With, with the reductions projected in revenue and the reduced expenses, that essentially cuts $76,000 out of the original proposed budget that was approved by both the Select Board and the Budget Committee. So that gives us a new proposed budget increase of 148,000 and change, which is roughly, I think it's 3.7% or something along those lines. The original increase was, I think, 5.7%. So we have reduced the increase pretty significantly, actually. And that's over the, over the current budget year. Another caveat too here is that you probably followed the Congress. The US House of Representatives approved a spending package to include reimbursements to municipalities for loss of revenue, as well as states and several other things in their package. But this is currently held up in the Senate and won't be passed as it was in the House. We can't wait to decide what's going to happen from the federal government when it comes to this. And I'm not really optimistic that they'll provide funding for municipalities. I think there might be some, but I don't know. It's, it's too much of an unknown at this point to know what they're going to do for our budget. So with that, you know, we can turn it over to questions and comments and suggestions.
What's the impact if, if we've overestimated revenue reductions? And taking this, you know, the biggest category is the public works and road paving. If, when we finally get the sort of back, back pay from all the excise tax and that comes in, and things are much more positive, can we at that point access any of that money and increase that budget item? Or are we sort of stuck with the reduced number?
We could. So if we saw, if we saw our additional revenue coming in, or let's, let's just say, for example, the federal government gives us some funding through, through another act, we would have to go to a town meeting, to a special town meeting, to be able to have, get authorization to use that revenue. So that's the, that's the issue there.
Jeff had his hand up first.
Yeah. Bill, I think on the, your concern on the revenues around excise tax, and maybe that savings may be more than what you need, I'd leave it where it is, only because you may have misses in other areas, but I think you're netting out okay at the 159,000 mark. For example, for example, the Opera House rentals may be much lower than what you, you've estimated. On the expense side, the 100,000 out of paving is tolerable this year, mostly because we have a bond package that we're executing. And, you know, we're going to have better roads throughout town as a result of that, regardless of what we put here. So
Okay.
That one usually takes a hit.
Doug had his hand up next, and then Mark.
Yeah, to sort of follow up on Denise's comments. First of all, Bill, I want to commend you on making this very understandable. It's not pleasant to read, but it is understandable. Having said that, I think that a lot of our expenses tend to be various reserve accounts. They're not really rainy day funds, but reserve accounts that we're just planning for the future. And I could see us holding money back from those. But again, I share some of Denise's concern about cutting 100,000 out of our paving budget.
Yeah.
Because that's really more deferred maintenance. And yet I kind of worry about, you know, what the cost down the road may be. Either because we have to rebuild the road instead of just putting a skim coat on it. And also the difficulty of getting that money back through a town meeting if, if we give it up now.
Yeah, and I don't like taking the 100, the $100,000 out of road construction, because it is deferring the maintenance. It's just putting things another year off or more. So there is a concern there. And that's the same with, with a lot of the reserve accounts that we're reducing the amounts for. But obviously, when you're talking about roads, that's, that's much more noticeable than it is if it's, you know, a deposit to the town office reserve account, for, for instance.
That was kind of my point.
Yeah, no, exactly. I, I completely understand that. I think, you know, we will have to look at all of the, if, if we, if you approve these cuts, then we're going to have to look at the capital improvement plan and make adjustments in all of the, all of the accounts that these are affecting, and increase those amounts in the future years to try to get, get back up. And with public works, you know, then you're, you're potentially looking at, in next year's budget, going from what would be $200,000 for road construction and paving to $400,000 to try to make up for that difference, which is a big jump, you know, in $200,000 in one year. My goal with that, when I first came here, was that we slowly try to increase that each year so that it wasn't such a huge impact from one year to the next.
Excuse me, Mark, I know I'm butting into your time. So, so Bill, suppose we. Excuse me, Mark, I know I'm butting into your time. So, so Bill, suppose we, uh. You know, prove this with an amendment to leave the hundred thousand in there for roads, what would your reaction be?
Well, I, you know, I, I think. Thinking about people that are out of work or may not be returning to work and the businesses in town that, you know, are, are not operating, particularly. You know, the lodging, uh, the lodging establishments, the, the restaurants, that type of thing, that's. Trying to limit the impact on the taxpayer as mu- as much as possible. So that's why I put these together and, and we're having this discussion. And I, and I'll throw out there that, you know, I, I didn't say it under, when you were approving the warrants or signing the warrants for the school, but. They did not even consider going back to revise their budget. But I think it's the right thing to do to look at these things. It will hurt us that, uh, down the road in the long run. At the same time, with the bond that we have. Um, we will be getting paving done and, and quite a bit of it done this, uh, this summer and into fall. Um, but it still sets us back. It doesn't catch us up as much as we would hope to catch us up. Uh, and a hundred thousand might not sound like a lot of money when it comes to paving, when we're looking at. You know, a million dollars worth of paving that was improved and approved in the bond. But the more we, we reduce that line, you know, the, the worse off we are. However, that being said. You know, maybe considering a, a smaller cut than a hundred thousand and, and find a, a happy medium would make more sense than it does to cut. Or, or to not reduce it by a hundred thousand.
Uh, Mark?
Well, as much as you guys have talked about paving, that should make my, uh, conversation pretty short, but it won't. Bill, Bill and I talked previously about the bids coming in. For the, uh, bond paving and reconstruction. And what I was in hopes because of the low petroleum costs, that perhaps those bids would be coming in. In our favor, which might free up a little bit of money that we could, we could take care of some of that hundred thousand. Out of the extra money that might be freed up because of low bids, that's another option. And I don't know where the bids are, when they're coming in, or, or what they look like, do you, Bill?
Yeah, the bids won't, the, the prices won't come back in, the proposals, um, until middle of June, so it, it'll be kind of too late for that.
Do you have any idea, uh, based on conversations with Mike or other? I know other municipalities are paving. I don't know whether they're seeing a favorable rate or not. Uh, do you have any idea?
At, at this point, I don't, um. I don't have a, 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 a picture of that at this point, because there are, most, most of the pavement that's going on now is state-related paving. Um, there's not a ton of municipal projects that are being done at this point. Usually municipal projects are later on in the year. Uh, since public works crews are out there getting the roads ready to be paved. So I don't really have a, a good answer for that.
Yeah, I, well, I, and, and I concur with what Bill was saying earlier about, uh. Trying to do the best we can. I mean, we have a, a very robust, uh, plan for maintenance of our roads. Through the bond and, you know, as much as I hate to see the, the hundred thousand go by the wayside. I'm optimistic that the bids might come in low enough so that we could absorb some of that. Uh, is through the bond money. And, and I'd be, you know, apt to, uh, to vote in favor of the cuts as proposed.
My concern is that we may have understated. The loss of revenue. And in fact, it might be greater than that. Hundred fifty-nine thousand shown here. That's why I'm. I'm all for leaving the expense proposal as it currently is.
Yeah, I feel the same way, and I also, um, I'm not so sure that. I'm concerned that we've understated it, but I also, uh, but we may have, and I also agree with Bill that we. Need to keep in mind the taxpayers who really, um, are having a difficult time. Okay, um. Let's see, I'm sorry, did we have a?
Not yet.
Okay, um, okay, go ahead. Motion.
Well, I, I actually just, I, I'll make the motion too, because I, I wanna, in this case, defer to Bill's expertise to. As our town manager and balancing, you know, none of us really know how this all plays out. So with that said, I, uh. I move the board approve the budget, I just, I move the board approve the budget adjustments for fiscal year twenty-one as submitted.
Second, but I have a con- or further discuss.
Yeah, discussion.
Uh, Bill, this, uh, is, you may not have this answer, uh, at your fingertips, but. When we received the bond money for the library, uh, that went into some sort of a savings account, and it makes, uh, significant interest. Uh, I spoke with Megan, oh, probably a couple of months ago about how that interest was being allocated. And I think it was somehow going towards the soft costs at the library or into the parking. But the point to be made is, is that money was not going into our general account. And, uh, because it is a significant amount of money, uh, and we do have a line up here for lost interest, is there any way to use that money? Uh, to help with our, uh, adjusted revenues rather than, you know, hide it in the library project.
Yeah, according to IRS regulations, any interest that's earned on a, on bond proceeds must be used for the project. So that money, yep, so that money is, is being, um, allocated in the soft costs, if you will.
Any other discussion? Okay, Jeff?
Yes.
Mark?
Yes.
Denise? Denise? I think you're unmute.
Yes, sorry.
Doug?
Yes.
Can I vote yes?
Again, thank you, Bill, uh, you and Megan. It's a hard job. Thank you.
It's part, it's part of the job, guys.
Right, the next item is to act on revised town meeting schedule and methods, so. Uh, Bill and I went over this quite a bit at one point. Go ahead, Bill.
Yeah, so, um, I hope that my comments in the material, um, explained referendum by secret ballot, open floor vote. Uh, and the differences between the two, but for those that may be watching, I'll try to explain that first before we get and look at the schedule. So as the town of Rockport, uh, adopted, adopted secret ballot voting for, um. Uh, municipal officers way back, whenever that was, I didn't do the research to find out when that was done. Uh, but because you, uh, adopted that, or the town did, then the board, the select board has the authority to determine. How you vote, how the town votes on town meeting warrant articles. Um, and you've exercised that, you, meaning the select board has exer- exercised that. In the past by using land use ordinance amendments or having those voted on by secret ballot the day before the open town meeting vote. So the actual town meeting, uh, has started on that Tuesday, the normal Tuesday of election day. With the election of municipal officers, uh, school board members, uh, budget committee members, library committee members. And then, um, and also land use ordinance amendments, uh, and other things, um, as, as previously voted on. And then the second part of the meeting, which is the open floor vote, is usually the next night. Um, by charter, it has to be the next day. And then the rest of the articles are historically voted on, which in this case are usually the budget items and the. Uh, business articles, like when to set the tax due dates and when to, how to offer a tax club for residents. But the ti- it is up to the select board to determine how you'd like to have any of the articles voted on. Um, with the exception of the ones that are required, like municipal officers, for instance. And so I tried to explain that in my, in my comments. And with that, when it comes to. A secret ballot or referendum town meeting, there are other requirements that get kicked in, such as, we talked about at the last meeting about. The board having to hold a public hearing at least ten days before the vote. Regardless of any other, uh, board or committee that may have had a public hearing. For instance, with land use ordinance amendments, the planning board has to have public hearings on those. Um, and that's well before the actual vote because of the process and the requirements that we have in state law. So even, even though the planning board may, may hold or has to hold those public hearings. The select board still has to hold another public hearing on all of the secret ballot articles. So I essentially put together a, a schedule here with a potential town meeting date of. I'll go down to the bottom of this. Of, uh, Tuesday, the eight, August eighteenth and Wednesday, the nineteenth, if you have an open town meeting for any articles outside of the referendum. Um, and I always, when I put these schedules together, I always start with the town meeting date and I work my way backwards. So that we don't miss any important deadlines. When it comes to, uh, public hearings and, uh, posting notice of those public hearings, advertising those public hearings. When absentee ballots have to be available, so that when we have to order the ballots, so it all moves back up through. Um, and we are on schedule that if you, if the board holds, decides to hold the town meeting on August eighteenth and nineteenth, or. One of those dates, then the, it, the schedule works out. Um, the planning board has been meeting. Uh, and they do have a public hearing planned for June eleventh on the land use ordinance amendments from the ORC. And on the two citizen petition articles, um, and we had to advertise. For the public hearings, we had to get it to the newspaper, uh, last Friday, and it will be published. Uh, this Thursday, and then it'll again, it'll get published again on the following Thursday, June fourth. Um, and you see in parentheses, I've tried to lay out. In layman's terms, what the, uh, state statutes require for the different notices and, um. And the like. So with that, I think I'll, I'll leave it at that and, and answer your questions.
So, can I just, um, I, I would just like to say that, um, Bill and I went through this, um, at some length, uh, a couple of weeks ago. And so my understanding, or Bill and Denise and I did, um, so, um, my understanding is that. We have to have the public hearing anyway for the land use, um, amendments. And, and, and meaning the one on, I think that's July twenty-seventh, right, Bill?
For the, for the select board, yes.
For the select board, right.
Yes.
Um, so we have to have that public hearing. So then the question is, in my mind. Do we go ahead and have another town meet, I mean, have a town meeting on August nineteenth? Or, um, what is largely questions on the budget and items that are really administrative in nature? Or do we simply do, um, the, you know, do the referendum, um. Uh, process and not have that town meeting? I, I guess I kind of tend to say, why do we have a second meeting if we're having this, this like board? Um, meeting on the land use ordinance on the twenty-seventh of July. Anyway, I, I, uh, Jeff, you have your.
Well, uh, I would, I'm with you on that one. What day would we have the referendum election? Would it be the same? It, would it be replacing the town meeting date of night to nineteen?
Yeah, I, I would think it would be either that Tuesday or that Wednesday, you know, either one. Um, it's lined up, so if you do it. It would, it would start, I have it lined up, so August eighteenth would be the, the day of the election.
Okay, so everything works backwards from the eighteenth, actually?
Yeah.
Okay, excellent. I, I have the same feeling as Deborah does, uh. Because we have to have public hearings on, uh, many of these things. People will have the opportunity to voice their concerns, and that to me is what's truly important. Uh, to have a. Another town meeting with. Uh, we, we don't know if we're gonna have fifty people or not fifty people, uh, that's a concern, so. I like the way this is laid out and the options available. I'm leaning heavily toward referendum.
Another comment, put your hand up, Doug.
Yeah, but, but Bill, do you want to comment?
Well, I would just, I was just gonna say that, you know, to, to keep in mind that there are, there are obvious benefits to having an open town meeting. When it comes to the budget, because the numbers can be adjusted at the open town meeting on the floor of open town meeting. Whereas, um, you know, the referendum, even with the public hearing, you can't change the numbers because the ballots have already been printed. All you can do is provide explanations at that public hearing. Uh, so that's, that's the benefit of an open town meeting, uh, that you can make adjustments. Do those numbers. For example, we were just talking about the budget adjustment. If we, we'll have more information, I would say, by August nineteenth, so we could make changes to estimated revenue numbers or. Uh, the reduction, the reduced expenses. So if the federal government, for instance, came through with funding, we could adjust some numbers. I don't, you know, it's. The other, the other caveat that we have to think about is, do we want to have? How many, how many meetings do we want to have where we're gonna have a potential for a large gathering? You want to keep the public safe, and obviously the safer way. For town meeting articles is through the polls by secret ballot, uh, and hopefully encouraging. People to vote by absentee, so that they're not even at the polls. Um, so that's the, for me, that's more of an overriding argument.
And I think that's what Jeff and I are saying.
Yeah.
Um, Doug was next.
Yeah, I, I gave this actually quite a bit of thought, um, and certainly this, you know, the open meeting is certainly a real New England tradition. But then we talk about having the public hearing ahead of time, so, you know, people would still have an opportunity to be heard. But, uh, riffing a little bit on what Bill said, you know, when I think about the, the public meetings. Uh, number one, it's indoors, it can be quite long, which is. Or it can be short, but it can be long, and let's be honest, most of the people that attend. Uh, are in my age class, being somewhat elderly. And, you know, those all check boxes of things we shouldn't be doing yet, so. You know, again, my inclination is to try to go with the, uh, the referendum method only and just to have it on that. That Tuesday, because we always vote on a Tuesday, so that's the way I'm leaning.
And, and Doug, before, uh, Denise had her hand up, but before I, um, move off, um, uh, uh, over to Denise. I would just highlight what you say with the fact that, of course, we don't know what the situation is gonna be then. I mean, we may have some kind of resur- resurgence, you know, um, we don't know, so, again, it's, um. For all the reasons that you just stated, it's obviously a more conservative, safer approach. Uh, Denise?
Yeah, and I, I, I can sort of agree with all of that, and I really think we're not gonna know much more about our revenue in terms of adjusting the budget. I mean, there are so many stories about promised, you know, if you get federal money, even if they adopt it and pass it. Sometimes the money never comes, so I doubt we'd be changing our budget in reliance on something like that. So I, again, for the safety reasons for the public, um, trying to be efficient, one public hearing seems to be enough on. On the land use ordinance and the citizen petition, so I come in favor of, of not having the open town meeting. For a lot of unusual circumstances this year.
Any other que- uh, kind of, Mark?
Yeah. Yeah, um, curious as to how the public hearing is gonna work for the planning board. Yeah, so we've, I've been talking with, um, with Jeff Parker about that, so. In anticipation of having more than fifty, which we can't have under the governor's current, um, emergency orders. What we'll do is have the public hearing in the auditorium for the opera house and have social distancing in place with the chairs spaced apart. Um, we will have to have a count, because with planning board members and staff that will be there. You know, we'll probably only be able to have forty public, uh, in that room with them to keep it at, at fifty or under. Um, and then we'll have an overflow room here in the, uh, Jeff Parker meeting room downstairs. That will be set up with camera, monitors, microphones, so that people can come down. That can't fit upstairs will come down here, and we figure we can fit, we haven't done the, the math yet, but, um, or the layout, but we can fit twenty to thirty. Socially distanced down here, uh, and they'll be able to view and hear the meeting on the monitors. And then when it's time for people in this room to comment, uh. And then when it's time for people in this room to comment, they'll be broadcast. With the cameras down here and the microphone, so that then it would be able to be seen up and heard upstairs as well. So, I mean, I think that's the best that we can possibly do under the circumstances and that allows for. Anywhere from sixty to seventy public members, and I think that's probably enough. When it comes to the to the land use ordinance amendments and the citizen petitioned articles.
The only reason I say that is I, you know, having gone to many a town meeting. I can say that once in probably. Eighteen or nineteen years, there was more than fifty. More often than not, there was less than fifty. Forty-five to forty-seven seems to be quite a number and I understand the concerns. I just don't want us to get into this practice, you know, the next year we don't do the town meeting. I I'd like to think that, and I'm okay not doing it, but it's just a one time thing, I hope.
I I agree with that. I think that we are probably all in that spot.
We are all in that spot, or at least I am for sure. The only reason I would lean toward the referendum this year is because there's not going to be a vaccine in anybody's arm at that time.
I'm good, yeah.
Denise, you had a comment?
Yeah, I was just thinking of sort of out loud, if we did have more people who wanted to comment. I suppose once somebody had made a comment, I wonder if they could leave and you could come in, just.
Yeah, we'll have, we'll have that kind of in our back pocket because, you know, we're we're going to have to. So we'll have people, you know, at the doors. Just monitoring and if somebody, if there, if we have other people that are outside that are trying to comment, then we'll do that after somebody has commented. We'll just have to have them go outside and have allow somebody else in, so. And that's, I've I've talked with our attorney about that and he thinks that's probably as best that we possibly can do at this point. In order to stay on track and we get to a certain point where, so much later than August eighteenth. That we're having issues with committing taxes and printing tax bills and the like, which is why I put that on the. As well, so that, you know, you could understand that we do need to send tax bills out around September first in that, in that area, so.
Could you stay back to the state statutes and still have a structured Zoom meeting for any of these?
It'd be really difficult.
I'm just thinking for the public hearing part of it because there's no votes being taken. But people participate by Zoom with, you know, comments going to being funneled or whatever. That's a thought.
Yeah, yeah.
You, Jeff, do you mean the July twenty seventh?
Talking about any of the public meetings, the the public hearings that are out there that would have to be held.
Yeah, I I I can talk with Jeff about that, to think about the logistics. When it comes to that, that could be another option to be able to have a Zoom platform so that anybody that did not want to attend the public hearing could. Participate in a in a Zoom manner. And then the board, the planning board, for instance, could be, you know, live, if you will, and then have it up on the screen. So certainly can can look at that, too.
Yeah, because that that way, what you're not getting in a town meeting, you would at least be getting. Except for the modification to amount, you would be getting the proper public feedback easily.
Okay, so going back to the issue at hand on the town meeting schedule and method. Are we ready to make a motion? And I I think that, I think that based on what everybody has expressed thus far. It would be a motion, it it would be a motion for the, I'm just going to make the motion. I moved the board scheduled the annual town meeting on August eighteenth using a referendum method only. Okay, any more discussion? Okay. You guys switched positions on my screen. Mark, you're first. Jeff?
Yes.
Denise?
Yes.
And I vote yes. Now, how did that happen that you guys switched positions? Okay. The next is a discussion item, which is our future meetings. You know, part, part of this, what we want to do obviously is to discuss, discuss the schedule. The doing it in person and the start time. I have proposed to Bill that things seem to have worked out pretty well. With the five thirty start time. So I know at the last meeting, we had suggested that starting at our next meeting in June. That we would consider meeting. Being physically present again in the Opera House. And I would like to throw out the possibility that we move up that start time to five thirty. Again, I think it's convenient for the staff who don't have to, you know, be delayed in. Getting done with work and then having time in between before they have to attend a meeting. And, you know, it's not like we have that many people who attend most of our select board meetings. So I think it's important to to make it somewhat convenient for for our staff. So Doug, you have your.
Yeah, I don't have any problem with any of that. Just one technical question for Bill. If there are people who are uncomfortable attending, can they somehow zoom into the meeting still? So that their face would show up on one of our big screen TVs and they sort of feel like they were there?
I would rather stay away from that and just go back to the live stream method. For that, and then still we could accept public comments, you know, prior in email and and over the live stream like we normally do.
The problem with doing that, Doug, is that, you know, then you have to make that, you have to make that that link publicly available. And the moment you make that publicly available, that's when you have select boards like what Tomston being Zoom bombed.
Okay, well, I hadn't really thought it through and I personally don't have any trouble showing up at the Parker Room with appropriate distancing, exactly.
I I do want to make one comment that we do have to have if the June eighth meeting at five thirty. Because we had to advertise for a public hearing for a new liquor license that came in. So we had to have that add into the paper. Already, so we did put it for five thirty.
That's baked in, but.
That is baked in just for the June eighth meeting. So I just want to make that point.
And and, you know, I would suggest that we could try this in the summer, see how it goes. And if we decide that there's problems with it, either from the public standpoint or anyone else's standpoint, we can always reevaluate. The start time, you know, come fall.
I like the earlier start time because particularly if there's more going on in the meeting. Where it's a longer meeting, it it's, I don't do very well when it gets, starts getting close to nine and we're still like.
Right, right. Okay, any other comments on that? And Bill, did I, was there anything else that we wanted to cover under that agenda item or just that?
I think just whether, what time you want to start and if you're going to do them in person or not.
Yep, so the answer is five thirty in person, starting with the next meeting.
Is the option still there as we had done earlier to? Do it remotely as well?
So if, for example, one of the select board members felt uncomfortable about attending in person?
Yeah, that had, we had done that early on where we had that option in person or pop in virtually.
Our last in-person meeting, maybe we're on. I would just, if somebody on the board doesn't want to do in person, I guess I just assume do Zoom then because it's. Somebody's calling in on a speakerphone and.
I will say legally, the answer to Jeff's question is legally, yes, we still can continue the remote meetings. Either partially in person, partially remote or fully remote. It's, I think it's for up to thirty days after the.
Emergency.
Emergency, I I'd have to look at it exactly, but we.
So if I might, I mean, we still have Zoom capability. And if a member did not want to go for whatever reason, you could still live stream to the world. And have that board member zoom in, couldn't you?
Yeah, that's what we did before, right?
Well, we had before, we had one board member on on speakerphone, but yes, because we didn't have the capability then. But yes, we could have any of the members that aren't, that aren't comfortable coming to the meeting physically. In person could do is the Zoom, so we could do a combination.
And the Zoom would be up on like, the live stream would be up on the screen and then. Screen for the Zoom call?
We would have, we would have, we have it up on the screen now in the in the room at the Opera House. And so I see everybody on my computer screen and up on the monitor as well.
Jeff, did you have a comment?
Yeah, second question, this would still be closed to public from a physical standpoint?
No, I would open it, we we would open it to the public.
But with guidelines of what we're, you know, it has to be less than fifty or no more than fifty or. That's what's in effect then.
Required to wear a face mask? Because I'm, I don't think I'd be comfortable being in.
I will be virtual, Denise, and I will be virtual if it's open to the public.
Yeah, how do we do face masks if we're talking?
Well, I just, it starts to feel like.
Yeah, you you would, you would, the face masks are, would be required if you can't maintain social distancing.
Yeah, I don't know with airflow indoor spaces.
Yeah, this is why we're having the discussion.
If you guys don't feel comfortable about it, how do you feel, Doug?
Well, I'm trying to think back like Jeff says when we started. How were, we didn't have the public at those early meetings, did we, when we were spread out around the Parker Room?
No, I I called in and I, you guys had me set up as a telephone in a corner somewhere.
Yeah, yeah, I remember that, but what about public?
No, we did not have the public.
So why is it different now?
Because the restrictions have gone up to fifty in one location versus the ten.
But if the board doesn't feel comfortable with it, then we don't do it.
Right, so it's completely up to the board. You're still allowed to meet remotely if you'd like. I just brought it up as a conversation or discussion item because of the increase in the gathering number.
You know, just keeping in mind how many we normally have.
Sorry, Denise.
I'm sorry, Jeff, I should.
I would be okay with meeting in person with the six or seven people that are normally there. As part of the select board and all that being live streamed. I'm not real comfortable with fifty people plus in that room. Normal. Select board meeting.
Denise?
I I agree. I mean, there's too many people showing up from Boston, New York now. We don't know who's coming in and where they've been. I'm not, I'm not comfortable.
Doug, do, how do you feel?
I feel the same way Jeff does, you know, if there's just the select board and the audio visual people and Bill. I'd be happy to go to the meeting, but. If we can't talk to our lawyer and find some way to, you know. Just have the public attend by live stream or something, then I wouldn't be comfortable.
I'm, I, I, I'm okay if the three of you feel uncomfortable. And I I don't have any problem with continuing it the way we're doing it now remotely.
I would prefer to do it in person because I think there's a value there. But if the attorney says, well, you can't do it that way without having the potential for fifty people, then all bets are off.
So what's, you know, I I'm in favor of us getting together. Because as Doug said, there's a lot of value that gets there from our facial expressions to everything else that goes with it. And, you know, is there any difference between us having our own meeting there? Versus having a Zoom meeting, we're still by ourselves. I mean, and it gets livestreamed out. So could we do it by ourselves?
I didn't ask the attorney that question, so I'd have to ask him.
Yeah, I mean, I'm just trying to figure out, I mean, right now, we're having a meeting, we're by ourselves. And if we were in the room down there by ourselves and livestreamed it. And I'm just curious the difference. If we could get together by ourselves and have a livestreamed meeting. You know, I'd be game for that.
Yep, me too.
All right, so I think that's a consensus, Bill. If we can get together with just the board without. And and do the, do, do public input the way we're doing now. Then that would be the first preference, I think. And then, secondly, if we have to open it up to the public. Then the second preference would be to continue to do it remotely.
Okay, I'll ask the the attorney and we'll, I'll give you the results when I find out.
Okay, either way, we'll start at five thirty.
Good discussion.
Yeah, okay, so any, any select board liaison reports?
Library building committees, oh, did I talk over?
That's okay, Jeff said no, so go ahead, Denise.
Well, the only committee that I'm a liaison to that's having a meeting is the library building committees meeting tomorrow at ten AM. To discuss lower level finishes, which the construction team is eager to get the information, so.
Okay, Mark, do you have any?
I think the parks and beautification was well laid out by Doug earlier. The conservation people had a meeting, their agenda was publicized, I think you may have seen it. And the notes will be forthcoming.
All right, and Doug, anything further?
Yeah, just quickly on the planning board, because they've started up again having various Zoom meetings and whatnot. Interestingly, a second pre-application for solar power out on Route seventeen has come through. So there's another firm that's interested in putting in a solar array out there. So there is some urgency to getting our O R C to be looking at these various issues. So that was it from planning, nothing else has met. I have a question, though, from the harbor for Jeff. You know, I see again that this year Skyhook Rigging is setting up their truck. Over on the park side of the river. And I know in the past we've talked about having them set up over on the commercial side. Where the lobster selling station is down in the parking lot. And I know there's been a little bit of pushback from the fishermen because that's their parking spots. But has the committee given any thought to letting Skyhook use that area? Over near the commercial side because first of all, it would be much nicer for them. And two, it keeps their crane out of the trees and away from the benches and everything else.
No, to my recollection, and I have to go back to the notes, but no. Concrete decision was made one way or the other, Doug. It was discussed and Abby had considerable input into that. That may be a question for Bill to follow up with Abby on, but it was not. It's been talked about as many things have been, but I don't believe there was any. Push or mandate one way or another.
I can follow up on that with Abby.
Okay, that was everybody and I don't have, Midco Solidways hasn't met since we, they meet Wednesday. Since we last talked. And also that broadband task force that we put together hasn't met yet, but will be soon, having a remote call.
Do we have, do we have any new information about any assistant harbor masters? Anything on that front? That was a hint on Abby. Is there any update?
Yes, I I wasn't gonna share. We do have a. We actually have two additions to the Rockport family. So Abby has a baby boy that was born on May eighteenth. And everybody's healthy and happy, um, and back home, so that's a good thing. And then, um, Ben Augren's wife, uh, Ben works at the library. His wife gave birth, I believe it was either. A week later, I think it was about a week later, it might even been the same day. It was, it was very close, um, to also another baby boy.
I understand.
Yeah, last, I think, six weeks, we've had four baby boys, um. Among staff members.
Wow.
Great.
Okay, I think that's it, uh, on the agenda. Bill, we covered everything?
Yes.
All right.
We adjourned.
We adjourned this to dust the body.
Okay. Second, okay, um, call a motion, Jeff? Is that an I?
Yes, that was an I.
Mark?
Yes.
Denise?
Yes.
Doug?
Yapper.
Yes, okay. All right. Very nice seeing you all.
Thank you, everyone.
Um, by the way, thanks for doing such a great job, uh, painting the bridge, Denise and others. Um, they got their little spray. And out there and they're spray painting away.
Okay, better go.